United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
Indivisible with liberty.
Justice for all.
Okay, so we are on to communications. We had a communication on April 27th from Jen Voorhees on state requirements for the school year. A communication from Andrea Alexander on April 29th. On the, on the statewide Y of X campaign on May 5th from Rebecca Hirsch. Also on Constitution of a School Day, May 5th from Lynn Frier on health concern. On several more on May 5th, all of these are May 5th. Rebecca Hirsch on timeline of Wednesday communications. Allison Cassell Dunn on Monday's public comment. Ruben Hirsch on school on Wednesday. Jen Voorhees meeting email, meeting reminder email blasts. That's school board meeting reminder email blast. And Rebecca Hirsch on New Jersey District data comparison. So with that, we'll go to our student representative report. And Mariana could not be here tonight, and I don't see Polly in the room.
Polly couldn't make it.
She could not make it either. So Scott, you're gonna do your report.
Yeah, I have a very brief report that I'll share that Polly sent me. There were no updates to, to provide from Irving nor at the high school. But regarding middle school and Bartle. At the middle school this Wednesday, 3 o'clock, Ms. Chang, our mentoring teachers class will be hosting a live session of storytelling in Chinese for Bartle students. I wasn't aware of that, so this is exciting. It will be hosted by Keek Pan and read in Chinese by Victoria Song. This week, the story is The Happy Prince by Oscar Wilde. And we, she provided me a Zoom meeting link, but I see that it's for Bartle students. So I'm sure that the Bartle teachers have it by now. And that's all she reported.
Thank you, Scott. In fact, with that, though, I am going to turn it over to you, Scott. So you'll do the student spotlight and then you'll turn it back to me to introduce your comments.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure and I honor to have two very special students here. I see some T-shirts including and coaches, Coach Roy. And of course, Mr. Laster, the principal who is wearing his high school shirt. Who I'd like to have say a few words about our two students who we're spotlighting tonight. Go ahead, Mr. Lassiter.
Thank you so much, Dr. Taylor. And thank you, Board members and Board President, Mr. Krieger, for having me here tonight to honor these students. I think I definitely saw one of them here. I'm not sure both of them made it as I'm looking across the names, but I want to honor. And I don't honor athletes.
Sorry, let me just beat that person?
No problem. I don't honor athletes in this forum typically, but we had something historic happen just recently that I think kind of have to recognize when you have a student athlete who breaks an almost 50-year school record. I think we really need to really give a huge shout out to Ben Godish, who broke the 1974 school record in the 3200 meter with a time of nine minutes and 11 seconds. So Ben, kudos to you for making Highland Park history.
Yep. All right, Ben.
Fantastic.
Ben, congratulations. We'll see your name and picture up in the hall in the high school, I'm sure.
Absolutely, in all of the athletic honor down there by the gym.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Our pleasure. I had also wanted to honor actually another athlete from the track team. And I'm doing this because again, I don't always honor athletes. But if Liam Tilton's here, I wanted to honor him. Because behind every great runner, and Ben is by far a great excellent runner, is another great runner. And Liam is a junior and kind of on the heels of Ben in many races. So we look for great things from Liam and maybe even another award-winning, record-breaking season, if not this year, next year. He's a great hard worker and so big shout out to Liam Tilton as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lassiter. Any other comments from anybody? If not, I'm going to thank Mr. Lassiter, Coach Roy. I don't see any other coaches here. And of course, anybody else who joined us, I honor these students. And now would be the time, by the way, if you'd like to slip out, you're welcome to do so. You know, Zoom really allows you to do that so much more discreetly than when you stand up in the middle of a room and walk out and put the door behind you. So if you slip out, we won't even notice. Thank you. Have a good night, fellas. If you do head out, I'll see you tomorrow, Mr. Lassiter.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Krieger.
Yes, yes. So I have a few messages, announcements before Dr. Taylor takes, takes over and gives his report. First, just about two hours ago, the CDC gave their approval for the Pfizer vaccine for 12 to 15-year-olds. So this is fantastic news. So many of the folks in this meeting tonight have children that age. I have grandchildren that age. And so we're really excited in the Krieger household, but everybody should be excited. This is just great, great news. Scott will be talking to Penn Medicine about, Scott will be talking to Penn Medicine about the getting them in here, if possible, to give the Pfizer vaccine to the students. And, but you know, now you can practically walk into the health sites, the state health sites, the site in Edison down off of Woodbridge Avenue. You can, you can make an appointment easily. They are giving out Pfizer. If anyone has questions about it, there are venues to get it, which I'll talk about in just a moment. But before this, I wanted to go on and give, give some overview. Scott, could you bring down the slides? It's kind of glaring in my eyes. Yeah, that's better. Thanks.
No problem.
I wanted to say a few words about the rest of the school year. So first, and Scott will, will say more. First, the Wednesday catch-up day is being replaced by a regular school day with teachers teaching new material, reviewing old material and doing enrichment. In other words, the district will go back to a five-day schedule in the middle and high school. I want to thank Dr. Taylor for his data collection and his analysis and his willingness to discuss this with the board members and make this change. The data did show that the use of extra catch-up time will help many, has helped and will help many students. But there are other options. First, to remind everyone, there is extra help for those students who need it. Parents who want to make appointments for additional help for their children or students who wish to ask for that help directly can email any of their teachers to make an appointment. Teachers are available from 1:45 to approximately 3:00 PM for individual help. Second, Dr. Taylor and his team have prepared a very comprehensive summer program for students with everything from material review to academic enrichment to intramural sports. This is many times larger than any program we've had in the summer before. And the reason is we've gotten the additional federal ESER II grant so we can afford it. And the administration has spent enormous amount of time planning for it. Then, again, though, I do want to say we're going back to the five-day school year. I just want to make that clear. And then last, I mentioned the CDC. I want to mention, I work with Dr. Taylor and other board members on keeping the data on the Highland Park rates of COVID-19 and other data associated, because we need to know that, obviously. As of today, there were only four cases of COVID-19 positive tests reported in Highland Park for the last seven days. This is the lowest number, and it's been for several days. We've had four out of the last five days come in at zero cases in town. This is the lowest number we've seen since the pandemic started, but for a day or two in a week, well, like one weekend last summer. So this is great news. Transmission rate is down. It's all a result of people being vaccinated. So the 12 and up can be vaccinated. If you aren't, please get the vaccine. It's not only for you, it's for all of us. And if you need help, go to our HP Vax Help people, which deserve, they deserve a great shout out because a lot of the work they did meant we have such a high vaccination rate and our numbers have come down so much. Go to bit.ly, B-I-T dot L-Y slash HP Vax Help. And you'll have a form to fill out and they can make you an appointment. Or you can go to HPVaxHelp@gmail.com. I kind of have those memorized. So this is really important, but again, we're going to try to see if we can get Penn Medicine to come in. We don't know if they're carrying the Pfizer, but if they are or they can get it, we'd like to get them here as we did for about a month ago, giving, giving the Moderna vaccine. And they'll be back here this Thursday, giving the second, second shots. So Scott will have a chance to talk to them. So with that news, I want to turn the floor over to Dr. Taylor.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is three things. First of all, provide an update about scheduling for the rest of this year. I'll clarify what Mark said earlier about Wednesdays at the middle and high school. Then I'm going to also provide an update about what the summer looks like. We have to scale back the scope of our plans. We're still doing an inordinate number of programs, but because of staffing issues, we have to consolidate a couple. So I'll be specific about that. And then finally, I want to clarify what differentiated instruction is going to look like next year. I promised maybe a month ago, members of the community and the board that I would share a very concrete, specific overview of what a lesson actually looks like. And I'm going to provide the links so that you can actually download the sample lesson plans, one for elementary school, one for the upper grade school. That gives you a good, a hard idea about what differentiated instruction looks like. So I took the advice of at least one board member at last week's meeting or a meeting with the prior meeting. We've had three meetings in a row now. And what several members of the community suggested I do, and that is circle back to the students and listen to them, collect data, whatever data I could find through my research. So I went about in a week, bringing together by email and live 24 students, middle and high school students. These are students who represent a cross-section of our subgroup, or subgroups. So they're different ethnic backgrounds, racial backgrounds, socioeconomic backgrounds and edibility backgrounds, frankly. Based on what we know of their, some of their academic challenges and some of their academic successes. I met with them live at a listening session. I have 11 students appear for the listening session. And then I collected 20, what did I say? 13 emails from different, different student group. I also had Ms. Brady and Mr. Lassiter, the principals of the middle and high school respectively, survey staff about their perception of how Wednesdays were playing out. 22 out of the 24 students told me that they, they leveraged Wednesdays to help them, that they, they wanted to keep the Wednesday schedule as is. And this is a quote from one student. I'll read aloud in case we have any visually impaired members of the audience. This person, this student says, I think Wednesdays doing makeup work and getting help is better than making it a regular day because it gives me time to do homework and I need a mental break every once in a while. I did have, as I pointed out, two students in the group of 24 who said that, you know what? We, we actually would like to continue formal instruction on Wednesdays. And this is one quote from one of those two students. The student states, I actually would like to make it a regular day, talking about Wednesdays, because I think high school needs to be an instruction learning, be instruction learning every day. Let me show you some of the survey data I collected. Middle school staff, and mind you, we have a small faculty. So that 23 responses is actually a relatively high response rate. Were asked if they felt the Wednesday catch-up days were helpful. 70% rounding, 70% said yes, 30% said no. When asked, when middle school faculty were asked if students who needed the Wednesday support were benefiting from the support from their perspective, 87% said yes, 13% said no. We asked high school staff the same questions. Are the Wednesday catch-up days helpful for all students? High school faculty, 60% of whom said yes, they're helping, 40. I'm sorry, 58% said yes, 42% said no. When asked if they felt that students were benefiting from the support, 87% of the high school faculty said yes, 13% said no. So how do I resolve the concerns that both students have and parents, guardians and members of the board have as well? Well, I found a way somewhat to compromise. As Mark pointed out, we are going to provide enrichment with new exposure to topics every Wednesday on a rotating schedule, just as we have now. And we will also provide an element of support, at least carve out some of that time on Wednesday for support for the students who require such. I'm going to ask that any member in the audience who doesn't have mute on, please do so now. Actually, what I'm going to do, Mark, forgive me, I'm going to just interrupt my share for a second and mute everybody. Because it's a parent, the person who. I asked him, you didn't hear me. All right, continuing. So we will be providing new instruction. We will also be providing support time for the students who need it. Now, the caveat is going to be that every student and every teacher be required to stay in the Zoom room for the duration of the approximately one hour long Wednesday period at both the middle and the high school. So that means if there comes a point in the lesson, towards the end of the lesson, at which the teacher needs to break so that we can have some of that catch-up time that so many of our students pointed out to me, why met with needed. Those students who don't need the help can step away, keep the Zoom camera off, but stay in the class in case they're needed to come back, even if they want to move and do some catch-up work on their own, asynchronous work or homework. And of course, teachers will be in the room for the duration as well. I must remind all of our parents and guardians and students who might be here tonight that our teachers still provide office hours just to individual students who need the help. It's best that you directly email the teacher if you need that help between 1:45 and 3 o'clock or you can make an appointment with the teacher during class time as well, Zoom class time. I'm going to shift gears and talk about the summer. I mentioned earlier that we have a bit of a staffing shortage. We're looking for 10 more teachers. And we're continuing to diligently recruit and, and hope by the end of this week, we will have 10 more faculty. But because we can't count on having enough high school certified faculty in particular, we have, we're going to shift gears. We have decided we're going to be using a virtual school tool, like a packaged program that many schools use. I actually used it when I was a superintendent kettle worth. For any student who would like to recover credit at the high school level in order to graduate, more details will be provided next week about that. Speaking of next week, I know that it's the time to plan for summer. And I do apologize for delaying providing details about all the programs we're going to offer. We are trying to lock down all of our staffing needs this week. And so I anticipate next week, hopefully Monday, but at the very latest, mid-week next week, Wednesday, possibly Thursday, we'll provide very detailed emails about the programs, descriptions of the programs, students who might be best matched, paired with those programs, times, days and locations of the programs as well. Finally, as I said, when I opened my presentation, I, I committed to showing the community on the board some sample lesson plans. This, this comes from a question that we received about what differentiated instruction would look like. And I absolutely get that question. If you're not in the education world and you hear the phrase differentiation of instruction, either your head spins or it just becomes this nebulous thing that most people don't bother to describe to the, the non-educator. So what I'd like to do is first of all, remind everybody that in some cases, when we identify serious skill gaps that we can't resolve in the classroom, we will engage our intervention referral services committee. It's a longstanding committee and process that has us identifying any student who we're concerned is falling to the academic, social or emotional cracks. And then provide either push-in or pull-out support from interventionists who we're going to be actually adding to our faculty. Thanks to federal monies that we received through the, what's referred to as the ESR grant, E-S-S-E-R. But we also will be doubling down on how we provide personalized instructional support. Another way of saying differentiate instruction. So what exactly does that look like? I am going to share this presentation in PDF format on our website as a pop-up. So if you don't want to write down or type out the, the tiny URL addresses here of the sample lessons, I'm going to show you on my screen in a second. You can also download this presentation tonight and, and then just pull off this slide. I'm going to stop my share and actually show you.
Sorry, it's Monique. Sorry to interrupt you. You weren't screen sharing. I wasn't sure if you were aware and intended to share, but that last part, we didn't see on the screen. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Yeah, I didn't know if you had intentionally stopped, did not restart your screen share after you had stopped to mute all. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware that your screen was no longer being shared.
Oh, is it, is it up now?
Now it is. Yeah, now it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up now.
All right, sorry, there must be a delay when I put it up on my screen and when it's transmitted to you guys. So I'll leave it up here for a second or two more, and then I'll take it down. And then I'll, and by the way, I'll, I'll, I'll call out the, the domain, the URL. Again, in case we do have a visually impaired individual with us now who wants to go to the site immediately to, to download an elementary lesson, sample elementary lesson that I, that I believe, and our director of curriculum, Christine Cozier, truly believes, is a good example of how we can differentiate instruction come fall. Go to tiny URL, all one word, tinyurl.com/HPelementarylesson, all one word. The upper grade lesson can be found at tinyurl.com/HPsecondarylesson. Let me, I'm not going to, I'm not going to spend too much time on the lessons, but I just want to give you a snapshot and then have you look later more carefully, if you want to, at the, at the documents, if you download them. So here's an example, here's the example elementary lesson that we put together to show you. You can see that, and by the way, this is an actual lesson from a real teacher here in Highland Park. And we, we will be providing professional development cup September to have our teachers be sure that they're modeling this kind of best practice. Our administrators, both our supervisors, our directors and our principals, and our assistant principals, look at lesson plans every, just about every week. Depends on whether you're non-tenured or tenured in our, on our faculty. And so they'll have an opportunity to make sure that teachers are in fact modeling lessons like this to this extent. You can see much in this lesson from numbers one to six is about direct instruction, providing information to the students, having them use the information, apply it, having them model the teachers. Let's talk about number seven, that differentiation kicks into high gear. So numbers one to six might take place for about 20 minutes in a 60-minute lesson. And then number seven to 10 might take place for about 40 minutes in an average, during an average hour-long elementary block for math or English Language Arts and at the middle and high school for English Language Arts period or math period. And, and, and much of the differentiation is happening in small groups that are pre-designed to have activities so that kids can independently work on the activities that are modified for their needs. So if you have students who have particular skill gaps in mathematics, the teacher having us pre-assess the students to identify what skill gaps the, the kids may have, will set up independent activities that hone in on those skill gaps. The teacher will then circulate around the room, look over the shoulder, redirect students if necessary. And particularly in the case of elementary grades, will have a small group of students, one at a time, usually for about 10 minutes at a time, meet with the teacher, groups may be three or four, at a question-shaped desk so that the teacher can actually provide direct instruction about the skill gaps. And so that's all happening to the final 40, 40 minutes of the period. Show you a sample secondary lesson that again can be downloaded from the presentation, which I'll put up on the, on the web or at the tiny URL links I provided. So this teacher actually breaks out how the differentiation is going to occur. And it's during the intervention enrichment section of the period. But for the most part, we don't encourage our teachers to spend more than about 20, 15 to 20 minutes. And what some might call lecture mode, but as you speak, we refer to as direct instruction mode. All lesson plans include sections here. It's required. We do, we have a template, lesson plan template that we apply, have our teachers use. And all lesson plans must include the things I'm highlighting. The accommodations are developed in September. Usually there's a key of accommodations that are developed in September. During the half-day that I incorporated, the third day that we have the teachers back, the first half-day of school for kids. During the other half of the day, we have our special ed child study team members work with all of the teachers in small groups, either by grade level at the elementary level or by content area at the upper grades to go over all of their individual students' IEPs if they're special needs or 504 plans, if they have 504 plans because they need other types of accommodations. And then the teachers create these accommodations, lists, keys, based on those IEP or 504 plans. I encourage folks in the audience, including the board, to download the information that you shared. Board members, I placed my slides in PDF format in the appropriate board agenda folder on the web. So you can just go to the Google Drive and, and download it at that, at that point. Mark, that's, that's all I have for my report questions.
Thank you, Scott. So I, I do want to comment to the board and public that we are anticipating a full in-person, as proposed by the CDC, full in-person learning in September. And so that might have been a question that you might have had seeing this presentation, which talked about the fall. That's what the fall brings. So I wanted to ask if any board members have any questions or comments? Just raise your hand and I'll call on you. Okay, so Monique.
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to get that feedback from the students and to, yeah, to center their voices in this decision-making process. I think that's something we need to really make regular practice of in making decisions. Thank you.
Is good. And I agree. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. So we will go on. I don't see any other hands now from the board. We will go on to our first. We will go on to our first public comment session. Okay, so first public comment session, this is number 10 in the agenda. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies one, six, four, one, six, seven, establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. There will be another public comment period after we after we discuss the board committee reports and 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 recommendations. And then and before we vote on them. So Mr. Rosner, you had your hand up first. Please take the floor.
All right. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes, indeed.
Good evening, board members and Scott. Hello, everybody. Thank you for taking the time for having this meeting for us. And first question I have is, as you might have anticipated, there are a lot of people on this call who are eager to hear about Wednesdays. So thank you for announcing that Wednesdays will become a instruction day. But what was not clear to me, will it be an in person instruction day in the schools? Or will it be a stay at home Zoom in instruction day? Because that's critical. I think most people would prefer to see it be in the schools in person with live teaching to the extent that's possible. So that's my first question.
Can I have your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's twenty two Harrison Avenue.
Yes, my apologies. Everyone, please give your name and and address. I always forget to do this for the first speaker. So my apologies, Mr. Rosner. So Scott, do you want to answer the question?
Sure. So Rob, that's being considered very soon and we'll let you know more about when that may happen. It may happen as early as next week, but it's still something that I'm discussing with principals.
Wait, wait, wait. The question was, are we going to be in person on Wednesday? I thought Wednesday would be exactly like Monday through Friday. That's the
Not this. We're still investigating whether we're going to be bringing in kids Wednesdays. We likely will, but that's not going to happen this week.
Will you, so today's Monday, though, will this Wednesday be an instruction day either way? But I I would just encourage you to try to be in person to the extent you can because I think everyone acknowledges that, you know, live instruction is far, far better than than Zoom instruction.
No need for encouragement. I'm there.
Okay, I I had assumed in our, all of our discussions the last week, Scott, that this would be exactly the same in terms of in person versus at home as every other day of the week. So I'll be honest that this is kind of a shock to me. Is there any reason that it wouldn't be exactly the same in terms of in person versus remote, the Wednesday?
Are you asking me that question?
Yes, I am, of course.
That Wednesdays will be exactly like they are remote this week and will look to be going live as soon as possible, likely next week.
Okay, so this week, because of the timing, you're gonna, it's gonna be remote, but next week, almost certainly. And I'd like to say I expect them and the board expects them to be in person next week. You know, the week, not to get into a discussion about it here, but that's our expectation that it will be in person on the whatever the date is, the twentieth or whatever the Wednesday after this one is. So Mr. Rosner, thank you. I I I'm gonna go to the next speaker now. That's good. So Randall Solomon.
Hi, Randy Solomon, three thirty one Felton Avenue. I want to thank the board for bringing back Wednesdays and Dr. Taylor. I'm extremely grateful. But I do want to say that, you know, we were really late to this, like it took, you know, we were, we we were among the last school districts in the state, certainly, and, you know, among all the districts surrounding us. And we missed a lot of instructional time because of it. And I would like to think that in the future, we could be more on top of it and we could be leaders and not laggards in something like this. And I also want to react to the data that Dr. Taylor was was referencing. I have to note that, you know, it seems pretty obvious to me that if you ask a bunch of schoolchildren whether or not they want, you know, more school or to, you know, hang out on Wednesdays, they're going to give you the answer that they gave you. So I think, you know, citing that data is, you know, doesn't doesn't speak well to the decision making process that was utilized to make this decision. And it took took a bunch of parents to sort of crowdsource, looking at what other districts are doing to shed light on this issue. So I I really hope in the future, you know, it won't, the burden won't be on all the parents to to mobilize and do research and bring a lot of pressure to bear to get Highland Park School District to perform at a high level. I also want to note that we've missed a lot of instructional time. We're still not doing, I still don't understand why we're not doing school after one o'clock. It seems to me, looking at the data that was circulated, most other districts are. You know, and I think in a couple, you know, we're going to see next year and and the years to come that Highland Park students are probably behind some of our neighboring districts. We're going to see some comparative differences because we had a lot less instruction. So I would like to see the, you know, hopefully this will light a fire under the board to really figure out how are we going to make up this instruction and not just look at Wednesdays, but also look at every way that we can get get instruction back online. Thank you.
Mr. Solomon, thank you very much. I saw Jean Sinzac first, so you could take the floor, please. Sorry, I got it right last week.
Yeah, that's all right. Jean Sinzac, two thirty five grand. I just want you and I, I've been emailing with Dr. Taylor about this, but I just wanted to publicly address my concern that we have not done enough to bring Irving and Bartle students, more Irving and Bartle students back into the building. And I know that there was a survey, so I did thank Dr. Taylor for that. There was a survey done that addressed at least my initial concern with Bartle students that, you know, they were asked, would you come back? But they'd have to change teachers and my concern was that, you know, that's the wrong question to be asking parents. You know, and why aren't we not doing more to bring back the teachers so that the students can come back with the teacher that they've had all year? And I I raised that for a number of reasons. One, which is we have to build trust in the community. We know a lot of disenfranchised families and marginalized families have a distrust in public institutions. So it's really, really important that the school lead on this. And I know I've expressed it to him, but I wanted to say it publicly. But also my deep, deep concern that we really left working families holding the bag on all of this and not done enough to support particularly women. And, you know, women's labor force participation is at the lowest it has been in decades and it will be decades before we climb out of this hole. So for all of us who do gender equity work, I was just really disappointed. I do not expect this district, obviously, to solve the problem that comes from decades of undervaluing public education and women's work and social safety nets at the pub, you know, at the public policy level. But I would hope that the district moving forward really takes those things into account when making decisions and particularly for elementary school students. I, you know, I fully support, really glad to hear schools coming back on Wednesday. I just want to know what more we can do to get elementary school students back in their buildings. Ideally, this year, if possible, but just everything possible moving forward that the guiding principle will be to make sure they're in their classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I see Paula Tartikoff.
Hi, four one six Grant Avenue. I also just want to emphasize how important it is that Wednesdays be in person and that school be in person. So I'm very glad to hear that that is absolutely the plan and thank you for all the work that's gone into that. I wanted to just make a quick comment also because I think it pertains to going forward. The way that data is collected in this district and used, I mean, to turn everything even further on its head. The data that the superintendent just presented using pie charts on the screen in no way supported the decision to return to Wednesday instruction. Instead, it showed that no one seems to want us to return to Wednesdays. What in the world is going on? I mean, how do we collect data? So much is anecdotal, random quotes, twenty four students. How were they chosen? How are these students labeled? What are the boxes that our kids are being put into by the people who are putting them in boxes? And all these yes, no questions, what are teachers supposed to say? How about some space for parents to give a little nuance and context and perspective instead of leading questions that are designed to get the answers that will support conclusions that have already been drawn in advance. Throughout this year, all kinds of surveys have gone out that parents can take multiple times on email, even if they only have one student. Or sometimes that you can't take more than once, even if people like I have three kids in three different schools in the district. There are some deep problems with the way questions are formulated that are posed to the quote unquote stakeholders. And also the way surveys are administered and the way the data is then used or not used and it rarely seems to support what what ends up being made as a decision. There is a lack of transparency here that is fueling deep distrust in the leadership of this school district. Thank you.
Thank you. M. Bochion, you have the floor. What's the first name? Mary, Mary, I know you, Mary. Mary, please take the floor.
Oh, hi. Yeah, thanks, Mark. Um, yeah, first, again, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, give us your address, though.
Oh, seven oh nine Madison.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what the other folks have said that Wednesdays certainly need to be in person and Mark, thank you so much for emphasizing that next Wednesday is, you know, more than fair to get on track for that. Regarding the issue of the kids on waiting lists, I asked two weeks ago, how many kids were on the waiting list in each school? And that was not answered. I wondered if tonight we could have a number on, for example, how many kids are on a waiting list to get back in person in the middle school? How many are on a in a waiting list to get in person on the high school?
You want me to answer that, Mark?
Yeah, please.
We don't have any more students on the wait lists at the middle of the high school. Anybody who wants to come in person has been able to. We have six students on the waitlist at Bartle, not at Irving.
Okay, because as of two weeks ago, the answer came in that there was, it sounded like there was no room for more students, that they were going to be prioritized to come back according to, it says here, I quote, special education students, English language learners, low income students, and then the general population. So
At at the time.
There were an awful lot of kids in the queue. I don't know why that question couldn't have been answered two weeks ago then.
At the time, we were following the six feet distancing protocol. But since that time, as you're well aware, the local infection rates have gone down tremendously. So we've been able to now adopt a three foot distancing rule, which the CDC advises we do at this point. So that helps us open up more space.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But even at the six feet, Scott, we should have been able to put in every single one of those kids who needed to come back. Those classrooms even now have, for my kids, the most number of kids is nine. There is plenty of room, so I hope we were not waiting for the the three feet. That's one of my issues. The other thing is this year, overall, we seem to have taken the approach of everything, take all the reasons to keep the school closed as opposed to what are all the things we could be doing to get us up and running? And I think it's shown that in this crisis of the pandemic, you know, we really retreated instead of doing everything possible to keep things running as normally as possible. And I I it really gives concern to say, well, what about the next crisis? What is going to happen? Is everything going to shut down again? We have to really really critique this year. The other thing I wanted to say is that the several times that we have referenced a lack of substitutes and even the additional entire week off after spring break, which was only after twenty hours of cohort in person time for the entire year for these kids, twenty hours of in person instruction, we closed down again. And the reason was given that we didn't have enough substitute teachers. So what I would really hope that given superintendents and supervisors and assistant principals and principals, they all can actually fill in in front of a classroom. And none of that was ever done. So, you know, we have to really look at what can we do to keep things cranking along? We have so many capable people that could have stepped in and prevented at least hopefully another week of being closed down. So those are my comments at this time. Thank you so much.
Mary, thank you. Christine Hirsch, I saw your hand first.
Hi, good evening. Three thirty three Felton Avenue. Again, I'd like to just say thank you to you guys for doing everything that you are and for trying to push for what parents want. I wanted to second something that was said about substitute teachers. I mean, my son told me that whenever the teacher's absent, there's basically no substitute teacher and they also have no assignments. So, you know, it goes back to preparing students and I I just, I do want to get an answer on what is being done when substitutes are not available? And why isn't there any work being done for the students to do on those days? And then my second question would be for the lower grades. Is the gym gonna open back up for these students so they can actually be active at Irving and Bartle? Because I still don't think my daughter at Bartle is back in the gymnasium. Thank you.
Scott, could you answer this?
Christine, teachers are required to leave lesson plans for substitutes in person, virtual, pre pandemic, pandemic, post pandemic. So that should be happening. And I'll bring it up again, I'll bring it up to my leadership team to Barbara when we meet to be sure that's that's happening. It should happen all the time regardless of the learning environment. Monday is the start of special subjects being taught in person. So Jim will be happening at Irving and Bartle starting on Monday.
Scott, you didn't answer the question, though, of of not having substitutes. What's being done when there are no substitutes?
There's no lesson plan that can be followed, right? If there's no teacher, the lesson plan doesn't matter, right?
Just to clarify, like when my son has not had a teacher present because they had to be absent for whatever reason, per him, there's been no substitute as well as no lesson plan. So last week, you know, he had no math. I think it was third Wednesday. I don't remember which day. I'm sorry. But he had no class because there was no lesson plan. And and also I I wanted to touch base on, you know, when Wednesdays are happening, a teacher should be able to prepare for, you know, we don't streamline, we streamline the kids so they're all in one class. So if she needs to wrap up early so she could work with other people, then there should be work for the other students to do. They shouldn't
I agree.
not get that education just because they're caught up. They should get more things to enhance their knowledge and to build it because that's where we need to be at.
That's that's part of the, let us say, agreement that the board and Dr. Taylor came up with. So we we expect that as well, obviously. But what about the substitutes being missing?
Whenever a student is not, doesn't have a substitute to supervise the class, the students' classes combined with other classes, usually in a large space. That's what should happen and lesson plan should be provided to the students.
That's not happening.
So what does that mean?
I've never seen that happen. Yeah, no, I mean, the teacher, the the students will get a note saying no Zoom today, sometimes shortly before the class, and then nothing happens. I mean, the the teacher will say, you know, continue working on whatever you were working on, you know, yesterday. And sometimes there's a multi date project, but it's, there's no substitute, there's no combining classes, there's nothing like that happening.
Well, obviously, I'll address this immediately. It's the first time I'm being made aware of the problem, so you can count on me addressing it tomorrow.
Thank you.
But wait, but Mark, Scott, could you address, though, the the issue with substitutes and not being able to find them? Could you talk about a little about that, please?
Yeah, it's not much I can share, much to the disappointment of the people like Mary and others who think that there are subs, there's a large substitute folder is not. And if I have to bring testimony from the CEO of Source for Teachers with whom we work very closely to 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 explain that or from my colleagues who would say the same thing. The fact of the matter is districts throughout the state, perhaps even the country, I don't know much about what's going on beyond Jersey, but I wouldn't be surprised if it's the case around the country. There are no substitutes. I mean, they're very small pockets of such. In fact, we took to going to the Graduate School of Education and strongly encouraging and strongly encouraging all of our student teachers to enlist with Source for Teachers, which we were able to do. In fact, we were able to hire a couple of long term substitute teachers who we just kept on retainer, in a sense, from the graduate school education. And then have the substitutes that we had work in the classes. People do do not want to come to the school building for the rate of pay that people are paying, and we pay standard, we pay what other districts are paying in this region. So I don't know what more to say, except this is the fact of the matter. And I, somebody mentioned a lack of trust with leadership. If you need me to present testimony, I will. This is the reality.
Thank you. Rob Scott, I saw your hand next, and we've missed you. We haven't seen you in a while, so welcome back.
Life has been busy and apologies, I kind of missed the first part of the meeting. So I didn't get to see the report about what's coming in the fall, which, you know, I'm going to watch the video. I watched the 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 video from last board meeting. There was a moment there that was really, really disappointing. There was one set of commentary from a board member that sort of took my breath away. And I can really empathize with a lot of parent frustration. You know, I'm a little bit agnostic to the whole Wednesday issue because it's been okay for my kids. But I also recognize that not all kids are the same. So it sounds like maybe there was some data reported, and that's a good thing. I have a comment and then a couple sort of.
Wait, Rob, I think you needed to give your address.
Oh, my address, yes, sorry. Twenty five South Second Avenue, apartment one in Highland Park. My name's Rob Scott.
Sorry, go ahead, Rob.
So on Sunday, you know, our cases in Highland Park was only, you know, nine, which is absolutely amazing. And it's really, really good news and lots of people are vaccinated. And today, the FDA emission in the emergency youth authorization for twelve to fifteen year olds to get vaccinated. And on Wednesday, there's going to be a CDC committee meeting. And so I think sometime on Wednesday afternoon, I'm going to be able to go into the system and make vaccinations for my daughters who are in eighth grade and 10th grade right now, right? And in about, you know, four weeks, they're going to be in four or five weeks fully vaccinated. And so I am really, really happy about that. That is really, really good news, and I hope all of the town and everyone can be celebrating that and that we can all be looking forward to a much, much better fall, right? A fall that we can all work together to make better. And I just want to say I am grateful that as rough as it was, and I've been a pretty sharp critic of some of the implementation, that at the very least, my kids were able to be remote. And we were able to get through to this point to where now we're anticipating, you know, vaccinations for all. And I think that is a good thing. And there's some achievement there, which I think I hope everyone can recognize. There are two things that I wanted to flag for the fall and for longer term that I hope the board will consider. I know one of them came up and maybe there was an answer in the superintendent's report, and that is about the start time for school. So one of the things that the pandemic sort of proved to me is all of the discussion that had happened before the pandemic about a later start time for students being a good thing. I think this proved the nine o'clock start time was really a blessing for my children. And I've heard from teachers that they found that it was a blessing for many children in terms of being able to just do better. So I'm hoping that we will be able to have the later start time come the fall, that that's maybe something that will happen, if at all possible. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that in all of the planning that happened, we went through many cycles, right? There was a point when there was a lot of hygiene theater about deep cleaning. We didn't know, you know, how the virus spread, but we now know who has recently issued, you know, word on this. There's been scientific literature on it, the CDC has issued that the coronavirus is an airborne virus and that ventilation is key. So I'm hoping that, you know, so we aren't in this position, you know, Mary mentioned the next crisis, right? So we aren't in the position where we're scrambling that maybe the board will move forward like, hey, how about a ventilation audit for the schools? How about thinking about what do we need to do to create a school space that is better in the future? Because there's lots of scientific literature that just improving air quality in schools actually leads to improved learning outcomes. Okay, so I know I've gone on for a long time. Sorry, that's the end of my comments and that's all I have to say.
So, Rob, don't be sorry. And I, I want to say that there's lots of agreement on the Board of Education about a number of things you brought up. The later start time, the air quality. It's very difficult to put in a better air quality systems on a two percent cap, tax rate cap, when the health insurance rates may go up and take three percent of your budget. So this federal money we're getting in multiple groupings, some of that will be slated for air quality improvement after, as we've done some air quality audits. As far as the vaccine, I made the announcement at the very beginning of the meeting about the new CDC and ruling, you use the children, I have grandchildren who I hope will get their shots this coming week. And, oh, and the numbers today, by the way, the number, because I've been tracking this, as you have, I see your numbers on Facebook. The numbers are down now to four, four cases in the last seven days in Highland Park. So the numbers have plummeted, and it's because of the vaccinations and it's because of the VAX, HPVAX Help Group, I think, getting so many people shots. So again, I thanked the group earlier, some of the members, I think you're involved and Rebecca's involved. And I know Abby, you know, myself personally, the work they're doing and you're doing is amazing. So thank you all for doing that. You've definitely got probably by now thousands of people vaccinations. So Mary, I'm going to call you second because Jody hasn't spoken yet. So Jody, could you identify yourself and give us your, give us your address, please? And you have the floor.
Sure. Hi, Jody Riccardi, one oh four North Second Avenue. So I actually want to talk again about our elementary school students and echo some of the things that Jean Sinzak had said. So I have a son in second grade and he was able to go back a few weeks ago when they had a waitlist. And we felt very lucky that he was taken off the waitlist. We had, you know, did have some families that were not taken off the waitlist. He had to switch teachers after being with the same teacher since September. And we were worried about that, but it's gone so well. He's done so amazing and it's been such a change to have him back in school. And I just want to echo what Jean said, that I think that this district needs to be doing everything we can to get these younger kids back. And I think, you know, there was a survey, you know, initially that was just like, would you send your kid back? Now there's a survey that if you, if your teacher came back, would you then send your kid back? Which really should have been asked weeks ago. Because to have your kid change teachers after so many months of having us at that age was jarring and we did it and it worked out. But I really think we should be singing the successes we've had. You know, when we, when my son went back, his teacher said they hadn't had to quarantine at all. They've been back for months. And I think we should be talking about that, that the safety, the safety protocols that are in place are working and really encourage people to be able to say, this is a good thing for your kids to be able to come back. And I just think at that age, like the difference we've seen in our son, you know, he's bringing paperwork home, he's writing again, he hadn't written in months. And it's just such a difference. And I know a lot of parents on here are talking about their older children. And we have a child in sixth grade who just went back for the first time today. But I don't hear a lot of talk about the kids at Irving and Bartle. And I think, I just think we really need to be more active about trying to bring these kids back. And to hear that there's six kids on the waitlist at Bartle, I wonder how many more kids there are that parents, they're not on a waitlist because they don't want their kids to change teachers. All those teachers are still at home. And I just, I just, you know, encourage everybody to do what they can to get those kids back. Thanks.
So, Jody, the board has been asking those questions and I've been in discussions with Dr. Taylor about it. And I think we feel the same way. We would like to get as many children back as possible and we are hoping to have some answers for this. So, Mary, you had your hand up a long time, so why don't you go ahead? Mary BoTion.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I just wanted to circle back to the issue of substitutes. Scott, I believe you mentioned that I was one of the people who did not seem to recognize the shortage of substitutes. But in fact, that's absolutely the opposite of the purpose of my comments regarding principals, vice principals, supervisors, and even the superintendent stepping in to cover when a teacher was not available, absolutely recognizing that at this point super substitutes are in very sparse supply. So, you know, to that point, having one of the school officials who could actually cover a class do so for just fifty five minutes to come in and cover when a teacher can't be there, really just seems like a win win. You know, it shows the students how much you actually care about their education. It provides some sense of continuity to the lesson plans. They just, they're not, these kids are not just stranded on their own. And it really gives all of you a chance to connect with our students one on one in person and remotely to really get a feel for what is happening in the Highland Park school system this year firsthand. So I really, you know, I have to ask outright, why didn't any of you step in this entire year?
But we did.
When?
We have, not me, I have to admit, I have not stepped in. I know our principals have. There have been times when I've tried to reach Ms. McNally, Ms. Knapp, but I can't because they're covering classes.
In middle school and high school?
For misinterpreting your point about substitutes, Mary, my apologies.
So in the middle school and high school, there have been principals and vice principals stepping in?
I, you know what, I can't verify that, could be. I can tell you for sure, I know Ms. Knapp and Ms. McNally have.
Now that's in Bartle and Irving.
Right, but I'm not sure about Ms. Brady and Mr. Lassiter. I don't know about their whereabouts at all times.
Or the assistant principals.
Right, Ms. Kow and
Right.
Mr. Richardson.
Okay.
I understand your point, Mary.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you so much.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Mary. Mary's iPhone eight. I don't know who you are.
She's not here anymore.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. Well, we have Christina.
Okay, so Chris, Christina Sartain.
Hi there. So I'm Christina Sartain, I'm at three oh two Valentine Street. So my two kids are two of the kids that are on the waiting list at Bartle. I'm a little like emotional right now because hearing some of the, like, the kids are doing well back is frustrating. I mean, I'm happy to hear that, but like, my son just got an IEP recently and I was really pushing that. And I'm happy because he's now in an inclusion class. But that's also prevented him from being able to go back. Because, you know, I was told that, you know, he's a second grader, they don't have room in the included class. And so I know, you know, my nice self and there's another, and he was second on the waitlist. The kid that was ahead of him was also in the inclusion class. So, you know, there's been, you know, I read the emails and I see they're trying to make more space in the classroom or even changing to bigger classrooms. And I don't know why that's not, you know, hasn't been an option. But like, my son is really struggled, you know, with the remote learning. And I really wanted him to go back and so, you know, it's hard.
Christina, excuse me, would your, would your child then be moving classes if they went into the school?
Yeah, I mean, so he was in a second grade class and so once he got the IEP in April, which I wasn't going to sign it until he went back, but I did. He changed to a different class. So yes, he would be moving to a new teacher, which I was ambivalent about, but I, you know, I felt like it was more important for him to be in school. But they, I was told that they couldn't, they could accommodate my third grade daughter because she's, you know, in a regular education class, but they couldn't accommodate my son in an inclusion.
Okay, so Scott, if you could have a look at that, please, we, the board would appreciate it.
Sure.
Please, with the principal. I think that would be at least helpful.
I mean, we can't have our special ed students in particular on the waitlist because we've, we need to figure that out.
Right. So, Mary, you're back and you have the floor. Please identify yourself and your address.
Hi, Mary Trent, two fourteen South Second Ave. I just, yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate what Jody Riccardi was saying earlier, kind of about encouraging kids to come back to school. Because it's just interesting, you know, like it's, my son, he just started back in seventh grade. And it was like nerve wracking, you know, for us, like I even, I thought, oh, it's, this is really weird, you know, he's going back to school. Hasn't been there for a year and it felt strange. And obviously, we got, you know, an email about everything, you know, what to bring and, and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, what might be helpful to other parents? And I guess it depends, like, you know, I don't know, like you guys want to encourage kids to come back for the rest of this year or if it is a space concern or, you know, I don't know. But you would think like maybe it'd be great to have almost a video of, you know, hey, like this is a day at the middle school now. You know, this is what it looks like, you know, for the people who are, I mean, really haven't had their middle school or high school kids in school for a year. You know, could you see like, oh, hey, this is how it works, you know, this is how, I don't know, the morning starts and this is what, you know, we're doing. Like, I'm asking him, like, oh, so what is it like? Are you, you know, you're sitting in the class, is the teacher like, do they look up at you? Do you, are you just looking at the screen? Is the teacher looking at the screen? You know, I don't know, just like glimpses into like maybe the classrooms or the gym or, you know, something positive, right? That you can maybe share with everybody. So maybe parents who are kind of like still iffy about their kid going in might say, oh, you know what, this, you know, maybe you should give it a shot. Like even my high schooler just tonight said, you know what, I think I want to go back in. Because he hasn't wanted to go, I mean, none of his friends are going. It's, you know, it's very hard to get a high school kid to want to get up earlier now and get to school. You know, and I'll put on like, you know what, I think that'd be great. You get to meet your teachers for the first time this year. And, you know, I just, I don't know, I think it'd be kind of cool to, to share something that might help people kind of get a glimpse at this thing. You know, everyone, but nobody knows almost what's going on. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I would say we would like to have more students in. We have very, you know, relatively low numbers, so absolutely want to get students back.
Yeah, because I don't think that's not to say that, you know, right, like you want to send out a letter, oh, hey, we, you know, we want to encourage you to come back, but I mean, but that's not, that's not being said. So maybe that is something that the principals should be saying, you know, you know, we realize there's only so many more weeks of school, but please don't hesitate to reach out if you're thinking of coming back in or, you know, something like that. And then the substitute teacher thing, the only thing I wanted to say, Dr. Taylor, is I think I don't see how that could work, to be honest, in middle school and high school where you said you thought kids were getting grouped in with other, you know, like hopefully it's only happening every so often, right? Like, I think my high school kid said, you know, once in a blue moon, maybe a teacher isn't there. But I think quite frankly, they just don't have that class that day, you know, whether or not there's like a lesson plan left, or I think it's probably more commonly, you know, just continue working on what we've been working on. But I don't really know how they would get grouped into like, say, another physics class or, you know, and maybe you were speaking more of the elementary kids, I'm not sure. But, but in the middle school and high school, you know, it's, it's odd to me to think that, or, you know, that you thought that there's maybe this whole other thing going on. But I think that, I think that what everybody has said is kind of how it is. Like if, you know, hopefully it's not happening often, right? Like, most teachers aren't sick all, you know, or you have one day, hopefully, hopefully there's no kid who's having that happen all the time or teachers out all the time. But I think that's kind of what the process is, is that it's maybe just continue to work on what you're working on. And I don't, you know, I don't know how that would even work to group them into another class, in other words. But that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Dan, Dan Ross, please.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, Mark, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
I'm doing well, I'm doing well, Linda, good to see you as well. First of all, Dan Ross, eight oh two South First. I hope everybody's family as well. One thing that I love about the Highland Park community is how nice everybody is, interpersonally. I really appreciate that. This has been an incredibly hard year. And it's been a hard year for everybody. It's been a very hard year for school administrators. And certainly, nobody has ever led a school during a pandemic before. So, Dr. Taylor, we certainly recognize all the challenges that you faced this year. There are, there've been a lot of comments that have been made about this year. So I won't add on, although my heart does go out to you, Ms. Sartain. The fact that my two elementary kids are back in school has been probably the only saving grace this year. And the fact that you don't And the fact that you don't get the, the benefits of that is really hard to hear, so. I'd like to talk about next year, and I want to talk a little bit about how I see sort of the board administration relationship and the way that the board has, has acted this year and the way that the board can act next year with regard to the administration. It's very clear, you know, the administration is in charge of the operations of the district. Dr. Taylor is the superintendent, the only superintendent. He's got a team of principals, directors, et cetera, who are there to make educational decisions. That's not the board's role. But that's not to say that the board has no role, and I'm heartened to hear the change in tone from this meeting, from the board, from the previous meetings, the board seems to understand, and it's taken a great deal of public comment and discussion and data collection and things like that, perhaps to sort of light a fire, and, you know, and so to speak. But for the next couple of months, the board's actions will be extremely important. This year, the board has trusted the superintendent and the administration, and I would say from my vantage, that has not gone particularly well. There are a lot of districts throughout the state that are doing great things. There seems to be a lack of curiosity about how those things might be brought into Highland Park, or how those things, how Highland Park compares in those, in those ways. I think from the board's perspective, I haven't seen a lot of information from the board coming to the administration in public about things that are happening that have been gathered from other board members and other boards of education in neighboring districts. So if not trust, I think trust and verify is going to be a very important vantage to take. Trust that the administration has the best interest of students in mind, but verify that the work is being done from the premise that as much in-person instruction for as many kids as possible is the goal, right? The, I know, Mark, I heard you say at the beginning of this meeting, the plan is for us to have full in-person school next year. That's really a statement that the superintendent should be making, and as a board, you should be supporting that, and you should be verifying that that is the entirety of the work that will go into the planning for next year. Trust and verify, make sure that the curiosity piece, right, the districts who have had tremendous success with in-person learning since day one, or five days of in-person instruction for elementary students since October, or other districts that have shown similar successes, find out who those districts are. You were sent a spreadsheet, I think, board members, Dr. Taylor, with 40 school districts or something like that, each of whom has done incredibly well this year comparatively. So, board members, I would ask that you take that leadership role as well, be curious, and find out what folks are doing. Pass that information along and verify that the administration is doing what its mandate is, which is to serve this community. The last thing that I'll say is that the use of data is something that must be challenged and must, there must be higher expectations. As the esteemed Dr. Tartikoff said, 24 survey responses out of 700 students is not an acceptable use of data, especially when the conclusions drawn from that data did not match the data that was presented. So, board members, again, right, you have control over the policy and the structures that are happening here with the administration. I ask that you do your due diligence on behalf of all of us. I have three kids in the district. They'll be high school, middle school, and Bartle next year. I've got many more years of my kids learning in this district, and I really would like to see next year at least be on the road to recovery. Again, I will say this has been an extremely hard year. Staffing has been brutal, you know, all sorts of things have been challenging. But as board members, it's now time to really take the stand to prepare for September and help the administration do the best that it can on behalf of our students. Thank you. I hope you all have a great night.
Danny, thank you very much. And we take your comments very seriously. We have been perhaps thorn in Dr. Taylor's side, even though we don't do that in public. We have certainly been pushing for lots of things, and it's a question of roles. In any event, Jen, your hand has been up the longest.
Do you mean Jennifer, Jennifer iPad? Yeah, that's, sorry, it's Jen Altman. I know you guys probably know that by now. I can change.
We do know it, that's right.
I know. 31 Walter. So I, I know you've been hearing a long laundry list of stuff, so I, I was wondering, I was thinking about not saying something or saying something in the second comment, the public comment, but, but I'll just add it now. It's, it's a different topic. I just wanted to ask about the summer program. And, Dr. Taylor, I appreciate the extensive summer program you're working on. My question was, if, and now I'm talking about the middle school, so I imagine it can be different for different schools. You might have mentioned this, but I just had a few things, if you could talk to your leadership about. I think it's going to be optional, but I wasn't sure. This is for kids who, you know, either got a pass or an I, you know, who didn't, who didn't do well. Let's just say they didn't do well, and there's some concern that they don't have all the curriculum under their belt before September. My only question is, and I've been, I've been waiting to hear this, and I'm just, because summer's coming pretty soon, and we're making plans for camps or vacations or childcare, is, one, is it optional? Or what makes it optional, like, depending on, like, you know, what grade they got? Also, if it is optional, and it's something that we don't think will fit our family, what would be the other options? You know, could the leadership, I, I really don't know, I'm not an educator at this level, but whether it's like the teacher puts together a packet of the curriculum they need to know before September. So either on our own, if we have the means to get a tutor, or if we don't have the means to get a, you know, volunteer tutor. Or also, if that doesn't even happen, I know you've talked about the concept of acceleration, you know, instead of remediation, and that's great. I was just wondering, so does that mean that the content, so if a student isn't ready in September because, say, math, they just, I'll just take my, my child, didn't gel with remote learning, that's, that's an understatement. So they sort of missed a year of math to an extent, but if they got the content, they'd be okay. So, you know, will that be, well, I guess you can't cover a whole grades content in the first month or two. So just if we could get a little bit more information from the leadership, just about how to plan for the summer and plan to get our kids ready for September, that's sort of my question.
So the summer programs are entirely optional. Students are not going to be retained if they don't participate in a summer program. High school students who lost credit because they received an incomplete for a class, and they need that class to graduate, are encouraged to take a summer class, but they don't have to do it this summer. Regarding the enrichment packets, it's something that we are discussing, and we're likely going to be implementing like we'd have in the past, our summer reading programs. It wouldn't be required work, but it would be support, supporting materials that parents and guardians could use if they want to help their kids. Now, aside from the summer programs, there is also a tutoring initiative that the Borough and I have been collaborating on that you'll hear more about in a week or two. I'm still putting the fine touches on it. Right now, we have 30 residents, volunteers with different specialties, who will make their services available for free, not for charge, a couple of hours each week. So we'll be making those resources available as well. Next year, Jen, you know, we're not going to be reteaching 2020, 2029, 2020, 2021 curricula. What we are going to do is continue, I use the word accelerate, maybe I should say go on or move forward instead of accelerate. I don't want people to think that we're actually going to swiftly move through the year next year. And as we tackle the 20, the, the next series of curriculum, curricula, identify skills, it's going to come down to skills, and a lot of that's going to appear, I think, in our math, English, language arts classes that kids didn't master, or at least aren't proficient at using and applying. And then, as I pointed out, either differentiate instruction in-house, or use some of the interventionists who will be hiring with the federal grant money called ESRTU money, to, to provide the support, either push-in, meaning that the basic skills people or the lower grades of the interventionist, the upper grades will actually go into the class and provide intensive support, small groups, or pull out to a separate room.
That, that's very, that's great. I appreciate it. And I would just, I would love if there was a way that parents could, and it sounds like you're going to do that, like, with the recommended reading, you'll do, you'll do it supplements for kind of all topics and all subjects, because I'd, I'd love it for some of our kids to go into September, not be, not behind, even if they, you know, really struggled with remote learning. So, you know, what they could do to sort of be on grade level in the, you know, before school starts or in the beginning of the school year without her sort of being, I don't mean they're labeled, but for lack of a better word, labeled lower, you know, so, and tracking, and I know, those are big, big loaded words themselves. I don't even want to use those words. I just can't think of another word because I have COVID brain. So, yeah, thank you. I, I just, I'm really thinking about the summer, and I'm, I'm assuming other parents are, and how to get the kids that did struggle to be as ready for September as possible if they can't do the summer enrichment program. So thank you, thank you for the input.
Thank you, Jen. Christine.
Hi, Christine Hirsch, 333 Felton. I, I was actually, just wanted a second, what Jen was asking in terms of, you know, what the timeline might look like to introduce this material, and how would we know whether our children need it or not? It's just a little bit confusing, and again, with the planning, it would be helpful to know that.
If we could provide more information as we get closer to the summer, we'll, we'll do that for you, Christine.
We're kind of close at the summer, though. So, I mean, that's, again, like, you know, it's just seconding Jen's point, like, you know, we do need to know in order to plan and know if our children need to be invested in further education.
Well, all right, I, well, maybe you can clarify your question. Next week, I'll be presenting information about programs. Sometime next week, probably Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. Maybe I'm, I'm not understanding what exactly you're suggesting we provide beyond what I'm going to share next week.
I guess, number one, how to, how are children going to be identified, whether or not they need this assistance, would be my first question.
Okay, so, so teachers will be using their benchmark data that they're going to be administering towards the end of the year to determine which kids they would recommend for the programs. And like we've done in the past with our, we call it Title I programs, like SHIP at the middle school, we'll do the same. We'll identify the students using our benchmark data, mostly in math and ELA. Unless we have students who we know have received incompletes the entire year for science and social studies, may recommend those kids as well. To be frank with you, our emphasis will be on math and English language arts, and we'll contact the parents and guardians, and then the counselors, of course. Now, that'll probably happen the week of May 24th. So if I can get the information that you all need to start, if you haven't done so already, make summer camp plans around our plans, you'll have that next week, and then soon after, you'll be contacted, likely by your guidance counselor, if not your teacher, if your student, if your child has been identified as somebody who could qualify. But the programs will be open for anyone, not just the students who we're going to recommend.
Okay, no, I hear that. I guess it's just a little bit confusing to understand the whole process of it, because I think you also mentioned, like, there would be opportunities for children to be able to potentially reach their full potential by getting further education. So again, it's just the logistics and understanding of when we're going to know and what the plan and the layout and the timing is and the hours would be. It's the basics, basically.
Well, you know what, Christine? We'll have to do whatever we can in the next two weeks to provide you every single detail that you need. We're on it.
We just need to hear that. That's all, in a peaceful way.
Christine, thank you. And, and I, 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 I do encourage, I mean, we have to get this to the parents in time to plan for the summer. It's, it's super important.
And Mark, if I, if I could just say thank you for replying to my son's email. That did mean a lot to him. I appreciated your response. Thank you.
Oh, you're, you're welcome. I was really touched by it, you know, and, and I should say, agree with him. So I, I hope that came across.
I will. Thank you.
Sounds like it did. You're wel, you're welcome. So, anyone else? There is another opportunity for public comment after we've, after we discussed the board's agenda items and voting items. So seeing no other hands, I'm going to move now into the board committee reports and recommendations, and I'm going to turn it over to Michelle for the curriculum and instruction report.
Thank you, Mark. So we don't have a very lengthy curriculum and instruction list. So number one is the regular approval of field trip requests. Number two is the adjustment of credits for the acoustic guitar course in the high school. Formerly, it was five credits. It's actually 2.5. Number three is also a new music course, again, for 2.5 art credits for the high school. Introduction to Keyboard, which is very exciting to see for ninth and 12th, I mean, sorry, ninth through 12th grade. Number four, the last item, is the approval of university graduate students. The students are listed, well, the student is listed below, and will be doing student teaching in language education at the middle school. And that concludes the curriculum agenda for this meeting.
Thank you. Do any board members have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I will go through the finance and facilities report. So we have a number of new items here. We have a new cafeteria bill list for the second half of April. We have approval of the treasurer's reports for January and February, and the board secretary reports for January and February, the Board of Education certifications for January and February, the budget transfers for January and 20, and February, that's numbers 10 and 11. We discussed the, the expense reports last week, number 12. Number 13 has several new contractors, ARG Educational Services for bilingual Turkish CST evaluations and translation services. We have a advanced education advisement for social worker case management services, Hearing Center for Auditory Processing Evaluations, Jeffrey Santuro for professional development, Abigail Cuts for, as a grand consultant. And item 14, which we did go over last week, I want to comment on. This is the first of two grants that the district is going to receive, when we've been told we'll receive. This is one of approximate, well, it's $1,079,000 in the ESRTU grant. That's the grant that was passed by the old administration last December. We are still waiting to hear information. We're just about to get information on the kind of CARES3 grant coming from the federal government, which will be perhaps for even more. The Board Finance Committee is meeting with the group in the district doing the grant to review every item on it. So we use this very, very carefully. This grant is due in by the end of the week. We will approve it. It will go in. I, I mean, I'm recommending strongly we approve it. I'm not saying we will, but we really need to. We'll review it in more detail and care tomorrow, and then it will go in on Friday, but we can move money around once we put the grant in. 15, we covered last time, the bedside instruction. We have boiler replacements at the middle school, number 16, and the contract being granted for $31,504.72 to General Plumbing Supply in Edison, and we will have our maintenance people install it themselves. Gym bleachers, number 18 and 19, and we will buy these at a cost of $10,049.95. These, number 20 is our tuition rates for next year. That's what we charge. A mini grant, number 21, for $150 to Ms. Tracy Maiden at the Bartle School from the Highland Park Education Foundation. Excuse me. Another grant for $1,500 for Camp Bernie, also by the Highland Park Education Foundation. Contract renewals now. Contract renewals now, contract renewed with our auditors. So this is the BK, BKCCPAs who come in to audit our district every year. Item twenty-four is the contract renewal with Pomtonian for our food services. Number twenty-five is contract renewal with Phoenix Advisors. They are, help us with our bond issues. And we have refinanced our bonds twice in the last three or four years and saved a, a, a fortune. And so these, this is services that are very important. Item twenty-six is renewal with the Bush Law Group, our attorneys who we work with closely. I was on with one of the attorneys today and we've been working closely with one of the other attorneys, attorneys on our contract renewals with the HPEA and the HPAA, which there'll be some news about shortly. And then our contract number twenty-seven with the Educational Services Commission for coordinated transportation services for the coming year. So that's the finance and facilities. And do any board members have comments or questions, please?
Mark, the sixteen and seventeen, the boiler replacement?
Yes.
Those costs are thirty-one thousand dollars?
Yes.
It's a lot less than when we did the high school, correct?
Yes, it is. I noticed that as well. Linda may have an answer why it's so much less.
They are much smaller.
The school, I think the square footage is probably much smaller in the middle school than the high school. No, the high ceilings and the multiple, multiple floors and stuff.
Yeah, I, I saw it on there and, but then I saw the, the price and I was astounded that it was, you know, much less, it's fifteen times less.
I was surprised as well.
Middle school is much smaller and the boilers are much smaller.
And, and do we anticipate also picking up efficiency with these replacements?
Absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else? Okay, so let's move on to Anne with personnel.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, I'll just go through the ones that are new, since this is a, a voting meeting. We discussed most of these last week. Number one is our standard approval of the Source for Teachers Substitute List. Not that we're getting a lot of substitutes from them, but you know, we can cross our fingers and hope. Let's see, number five, we have a couple of new teachers that we're welcoming at Irving, teaching special education, Carolyn Moore. At Bartle, teaching, just an elementary school, not teacher, not yet assigned, is Elizabeth Landis. Also at Bartle, Jessica Uppagraff. You want to go ahead, Scott?
Oh, Freddie Drackman is giving a shout out to Liz Landis. Liz Landis is a Highland Park High School product, so we're all shouting parade for her.
Welcome. That's particularly nice to hear. That's great. Number eight, John McClain is a special, whoop, there's my video. As a special ed teacher at Irving, welcome. And, oh, Scott, can I just ask, number nine, what is the strawberry festival? It sounds so fun. At Irving, do you know?
I'm embarrassed to say I don't know, but I, I can get back to you on that. I'm on that loop on that. I'm sorry.
I can find out through my, through my sources. Thank you. It sounds fun though. Then I believe everything up to number seventeen, we have already talked about. Number seventeen, these are, oh wait, number seventeen is also old. Number eighteen is the next new item. Uh, this is the approve, approval of our twelve-month tenured confidential and non-bargaining unit employees. So these are folks who work obviously for the full year, not just a school year, and they're not in the bargaining unit. Not in any bargaining unit because they have jobs that require access to confidential information. Number nineteen is the twelve-month, wait, non-tenured. I'm sorry, it's just one person, Mr. Luvas, Luvas? He's a non-tenured confidential and non-bargaining unit employee. See, number twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, the next new item is number thirty-one. Next new items are thirty-one and thirty-two. We are recommending that funding be allocated for coordinators of the Summer Holistic Intervention Program. That is one of our several summer programs. And remind me, is, is ship at the middle of high school or ship?
Correct.
Okay.
But actually, this year it's going to be, we're calling all of our K-12 programs, uh, ship.
Oh, okay, okay.
But there, but in, in the pre-pandemic and post-pandemic era, we'll be limited to the middle and high school.
Okay. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I see. It's right here. Irving Bartle Middle High. Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it. And then.
And, and by the way, ship stands for Summer Holistic Intervention Program. The rationale being we want to combine enrichment, academic enrichment with some self-care and then miscellaneous fun activities.
Sounds good. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Anne. So, um, Darcy could not be here this evening, so I guess I will. Being a member of the Policy Committee, let me just get to this. I'll, I will present these and it's actually the same as last time. So these are policies for the second reading. These are policies that got consolidated, changed, and we got updates from Stress ASME pointing us at the, the changes. And just as a quick report, the Policy Committee through Darcy sent out memos with merged policies and old policies, in some cases new policies. And the committees have gotten them. And as the Finance Committee knows, I went through those for the Finance Committee. The amount of work needed once they're merged the way they were is tiny compared to what we used to do. So this really should be streamlined and there'll be a lot more policies coming through. So we actually catch up on all the policies which relate to legislation. As legislation gets passed, we have to change our policies. So I'll be moving these eight or ten or twelve policies for a second reading when we get to that in, after a public comment. So any questions about either, and pardon me, the personnel or, or policy? Comments or questions from the board? Chris?
Oh, what, well, okay, so it's just a minor detail, but what the, the policy about the, the medical exams for sports says that parents and guardians can choose to have the exam conducted by a district physician. I just wasn't sure what that meant.
We, we will from time to time have our district physician send a representative, a doctor or registered nurse to our schools to conduct the physical exams. So the policy just basically gets a green light to have our kids be allowed to be examined by our district physician.
Is that a parent parental choice?
My set?
Is it a choice of the parent or guardian?
Yes, oh, absolutely. Parents can take their kids, guards take the kids to Rite Aid, used to be Rite Aid when they had a, a a nurse on staff, could be anywhere, could be any physical administered by any physician or nurse.
Thank you, Scott. Monique, do you have anything for equity and excellence this week?
Uh, we haven't met since our last meeting last week, but we, we are working on those policies and we'll go over those when we meet again.
Good, good, good. Okay, so having gone through all of our items, what we're going to do next is take public comment. This is our second and last public comment period. And then we will actually move all of the items in A, B, C, D, and E, whatever the, the, the agenda items. And then do some other work. So I'm going to read the public comment statement. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies one six four and one six seven establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. So if anybody in the public wants to make a comment, please raise your hand. Name and address, please, and I'll recognize you. And once we're done with this, we'll go into voting. Okay, I'm seeing no hands. We did have a lot of public comment. And I, I do, before we move on to voting, I do want to thank the public, there's a lot of public here tonight. And we really do welcome your public comment. You've made certain, some things clear and it's been very, very helpful to us. And so I want to thank you all and tell you how much the board, and not only for myself, how much the board appreciates the public comment we're getting. So again, thank you and keep it up. That keeps things going and thing, keeps things going well and we appreciate it. So, and keep the, keep the letters to the board coming. And I like to answer them, as you heard earlier, I really love answering them. Don't inundate me now, but especially from a student. It was, it's really my pleasure. So, so with that said, I'm going to go to curriculum now. Michelle, could you move your curriculum items, please?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move items one through four under curriculum and instruction.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Wizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, so on to finance. I'm going to move items one through twenty-seven. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Wizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. Anne, could you move the personnel items?
Yes, I'd like to move numbers one through thirty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes, to all but twenty-two, I'll abstain.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Wizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you. And in Darcy's absence, I'm going to move policy and regulations. Item one, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Wizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Great. So we have board liaison reports up next. Board members, if you have had any interaction with any of these organizations, could you raise your hand? You can raise like that and I'll call on you. Many of these groups haven't met. Some have met very infrequently remotely. So it's different times, but if you have met with them, just let me know and I'll call on you. Okay, so seeing no one, I, I hope come back in, in September. We have these folks meeting and we can go back to our more normal activities as we can with having meetings in, in public, in person, excuse me. Okay, so number fifteen is president's report. And I keep giving president's report at the beginning, but I think it's appropriate there. And, you know, to talk about the vaccine for the young, younger children, the very low numbers in Highland Park. The Wednesdays, I thought that was all appropriate and I'll, I'll keep doing it. And I'm thinking about moving president's report up. I think it suits me better. So we'll see, but I'll talk to you all about that. And again, I want to thank the public. For, for years, I've been on the board many, many times for many years. And for years we sat in empty rooms and I always kind of said, where is the public, you know, and it takes, it takes the pandemic. And so I would like to encourage everyone to be coming. And I'd like you to come in September and I'd like you to come a year from September, presuming that things are better. So old business, and I do see Michelle's hand up under old business.
I believe this is old business because we did discuss it last meeting. But I just wanted to say that I am also really happy to see so many participants in our, our Zoom board meetings. So when we do return for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, I would love for our board to continue doing a remote meeting as well as in, in-person meeting, because it looks to me like there's a lot of, you know, things that encourage people to participate that are just inherent to, you know, remote meetings. So I just wanted to say that under old business that we can keep that, you know, on the front burner, so to speak, as we plan for next year.
Michelle, thanks so much. And I also want to say, I'm, I'm very much in favor of that, having an in-person meeting, having Zoom running. I know I've used systems like Zoom for probably twenty-five years because of my own professional background and or more, and I'm very comfortable with it and certainly while I'm presiding to look at the screen on the side and also look at the audience. Just doesn't concern me. So I very much would like us to try to continue that. And we'll have to discuss it and see how, how and what we can do. Is there any other old business, any other board members with old business? Board members, new business? Okay, so no new business, no old business. I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Very good. All right. Well, we'll see you, some of you very soon and some of you not so soon, but see.
I'll see you tomorrow afternoon, Mark.
See you tomorrow at the, at the finance meeting.
Correct.
Good night, everyone.